Good evening. This is the work section for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 13. First item on our agenda is a conversation with Ben Maslona, fiscal advisor regarding our debt profile and future projects. All right, Ben, thank you. Should I share my screen of the Excel sheet?
Sure.
Is that helpful?
That would be great.
Okay, I will do it.
Great. So in the last, I would probably say, few months between myself, Eric and Noreen, we've gone through quite an extensive process in looking at potential future projects for the village. What those potential impacts could have on residents and layering in exist or outstanding, sorry, future capital projects with existing debt service. And this is very similar to the analysis that we had gone through a few months ago. Actually, it's probably close to a year now, the last time I presented to the village board. It's amazing how quickly time passes. But so what we have here is a working document that we've used pretty extensively, and it incorporates all of the general fund current and future projects of the village. And if we start kind of going left to right, columns one, two, and three represent current projects that have been bonded by the village. So that is fixed rate, permanently financed debt service on outstanding projects. And that's represented in columns one, two, and three. We then also had some vehicle purchases, which we actually had in short-term financings for a couple of years. And then those were paid off in full in December of 2023, and those are represented in columns four, five, and six. Then we continue.
You mean paid off in full will be paid off in full in December 2023?
Actually, I should, I should qualify that. So that fiscal, it's fiscal year ending. So that's for fiscal year ending 53123.
Not calendar year, fiscal year.
Correct. So then we move continuing left to right, we look at Manville Road, which we originally had issued a ban outstanding for that. We currently have a $999,000 bond anticipation note, so a short-term obligation outstanding for that, which based on a conversation I had with Eric and Noreen last week, the plan is to pay that off in full when it matures in December of 2023. So that's why you see that 999 in column seven, because that obligation will be paid in full. Then that's kind of everything that we know to date. Then everything from this point forward or this point to the right is anticipated or potential projects that the village has. The most, the largest and the most impactful of those projects is the pool project, which is represented in columns 10, 11, and 12. The current project, as estimated, is about $6 million. It would be a 20-year project, and I have it as level debt. So essentially, if you were to look at the total estimated principal and interest payments each year, they're roughly the same. So can consider it or think of it as a mortgage, you have roughly the same payment every year on that. So that's about $480,000. And I should mention.
Based on, based on 6 million?
Based on 6 million over 20 years. Yep.
We could, in the hypothetical that it is less than that, it's a proportional figure. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's also based on a 5% interest rate, which is, I believe, conservative at this time, although everyone knows that rates have gone up. For a double A community, currently 20 years is, should be around 440 to 450 as a percent. So I believe that this is giving us a little bit of a cushion, especially since this project isn't going to bond right now. There's going to be some time lag between its initial financing. So I have used a little bit of a conservative interest rate for these calculations.
Thanks.
And as you mentioned, it is 6 million, and that's the maximum right now. If we used a, if the bids came in less, or if the decision was to partially fund that project with other revenue sources, other sources, then the bond amount could be easily changed. So hopefully, we're on the high end at this point in time. We then have the Civic Space project. And I should, I should mention, all these projects moving forward, then well, the next three I'll talk about. So the pool, Civic Space, and the Brook Wall all would begin in 2526. Civic Space is the next project, potential represented in 13, 14, and 15. We do know there's some grants and other funding sources for this project. So the maximum current estimated borrowed amount is $200,000. That again would be financed over 20 years, and I use the same assumption on interest rate. So 5% once again, and the debt service on that is around $16,000 to $17,000 per year over the 20-year period. The Brook Wall, Nantahagan Brook Wall, same sort of assumptions there. This project actually could be bonded for 30 years based on the useful life, which is a legal useful life that's set forth in the resolutions. But for purposes of this analysis, we shortened that to a 20-year life for a couple of different reasons. Number one is for a project of this size, and by this size, I mean the dollar amount of 1.5 million. If we stretch this out to 30 years, there it's in very all, in all likelihood, you'd be paying more interest, probably 1.5 to 1.6 million in interest expense, as you would on the principal amount of that. So we left it at 20 years at this time. So but understand that if we wanted to stretch this project out a little bit further, we certainly could. So 20 years, once again, 5% interest rate on these, on this project. The last one is a combination of a bunch of, I'll call them, smaller type projects. So the total dollar amount on that represented in 19, 20, and 21 is $800,000. And that incorporates four different projects. The first being a pool repair project, which the bond resolution authorized $240,000 up to 15 years of financing. That project, you'll see in that project, it begins debt service on that, the $10,000 in column 19, and $20,000, sorry, $12,000 in column 20. That starts a year earlier, because we're going to be financing that with a short-term financing this December. So we're financing it in December of '23, first debt service in December of 2024, which represents the '24, '25 fiscal year. All the other projects represented in this other projects columns, there's a Clark Street drainage for $400,000, an electric vehicle for the police department at $80,000, and a PC TV roof for $80,000. So the total of those, those four projects are, is $800,000. One thing that's differentiating in this three column, you'll, you'll see, if you look at column 21, you'll see in two, the first area of $22,000 of debt service, because that represents debt service on the pool repairs project only. The other three projects, Clark Street Drainage, the roof, and the police vehicle, those would not start until 2526. So that the debt service then goes up to $89,000, stays roughly around $90,000 for five years, and then it starts to fall. And the reason why it starts to fall off is because some of the projects have a shorter useful life than others. And when those shorter projects fall off, the debt service drop. So after five years, the police vehicle project falls away. And then a few years later, you'll see another drop towards the tail end of this. But the rationale here is you're only borrowing for the project's useful life on its own. There is a method of financing where you can combine everything together. It's called a blended weighted useful life. But in the past, the village has not financed projects like that. You've typically financed each project based on its own useful life. What you could do in this instance, if you blended them together, let's say, for example, the police vehicle, which has a five-year useful life, might get stretched out to 11 or 12 years. And then the Clark Street Drainage, which is a 15-year project, might get pushed down to 13 years or 12 years. There's no right or wrong answer to that, but I've just kind of used the methodology in the past whereby you're basically borrowing the term of each financing based on the term of the useful life for each of the individual projects separately, not blended together. The net result, kind of where this gets us, is column 16. So this is a representation.
Top of the year, top of the year is to the other end, and then it'll be, you need to see.
Yeah. Okay. So, yep. So then 16 is really kind of will show us our, for lack of a better term, our trend analysis of where we are. So beginning in 2000, the very top, 2018, 19, you know, I write out 880, 190,000 dollars, then we saw some downward trend. The anomaly year.
Total principal and interest costs.
Correct. In general fund only, does not incorporate the water fund. The anomaly year is 2024, and just think of that, that's the, this is the current year. And that's because the $999,000 to pay off that ban is the rationale for that, or the reason why you see a spike there. It's, it's Manville Road. If you paid less than that, you would be down under 1.5 million, considerably lower. But because that ban is going to be paid off in full, it's, it's a spike there. But that's a decision that has been made based on the fact that you have the funds available to do so. And it would be, I guess, you know, for lack of a better term, unnecessary to continue to borrow against that project when the funds are on hand.
Ben, Ben, how much term time is left in that ban?
Believe that was a 20-year project. And we first borrowed for that in 2022. So there would be 18 years left to go on that.
And what's the rate on it?
The ban rate, oh, I believe it's, I believe it's 4.5% is the, is the coupon rate. The net rate, I'm not sure off the top of my head, the net rate is a little bit lower than that, I believe, because there was a premium on.
Eric, what are we getting on cash?
Well, so, right, we are, we started to get our tempo with, with them, which is an unknown. And they, the state is actually reimbursing quite quickly. So what we are able to do is we have enough cash flow to lay them on.
No, no, I, I, what are we getting as a rate at the bank, cash around 5%?
At night class.
Yeah, not, oh, at night class. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So why are we in a rush to pay off the ban that we're, that's costing us 4.5%? We're getting 5% of our cash.
Well, we're not using our, our cash, so to speak. It's ARPA funds that we're using for our, the village's portion of the project.
Which have to be spent by a certain date.
Which has to be spent by, I think, 2020.
But our funds aren't banded, are they?
We've got the cash sitting there, and we're required to spend it.
Right. To pay off the ban?
We could use it in whatever way we wanted.
Right. Okay. Yeah, because there's an interesting, I mean, I think all this analysis has to sort of be focused in the fact that we have, what, a $7 million fund balance, and our cash is yielding more than our current, than whatever debt we're having. So there's an interesting.
Right. Well, I mean, we're in a happy circumstance as compared to recent years, where we're generating real money.
Correct. And, and the other thing is.
As we would say in my parlance, it's a nice little, it's all ARPA happening right now.
Yeah. Well, and, and just under the.
That's what old bottom guys say.
Under the other project bucket, and we could talk more about whether it makes sense to use cash to pay for, but things like cars, PC TV roof, those are things we would typically spend cash on. But at this point, as you're, as you rightly point out, it makes sense to borrow. But, yeah, so maybe we should jump to the impacts.
I only had one question on.
Well, why don't we let Ben finish, then you come back?
Well, no, it's, it's, Ben already addressed, in column 16, the total.
Yes.
If you look down, there's a, I don't, 1,492 dollars and change down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. That's for the ban, right?
Right. A big portion of that is the Manville Road paying that off.
So is this column total debt?
The column we're looking at, this column 16 is the total annual expense for principal and interest, correct?
Yeah, total debt service.
Right, debt service.
I was gonna go look at, at the net.
Okay, fine. Okay. Yeah, I did, I was unclear. I didn't know if that was total debt or.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, gotcha.
So Ben, we have these. Go ahead.
And I was gonna say, and just to, because it came up as far as the borrowing and investing money, as long as the village stays below $5 million of new money, meaning it would be the brand-new financing in any particular calendar year, you would be, would consider a small issuer as far as the IRS is concerned. And you could invest money to make money. Or let's put it so you could invest money to make money and not owe rebate or not owe the IRS. Once we bridge or go over that $5 million gap or that threshold, then you're either required to pay a rebate, or we just don't borrow money to quote-unquote, you know, get a better return. But I just wanted to point that out, that you are definitely considered a small issuer at this point.
Are there, do you have municipal clients that are borrowing money basically against the interest as a?
Oh, yeah. Yes, a good example is, and if, if there was a municipality that thought they needed $1 million in the next 12 months for a project, but with the way the rates are, they would certainly say, well, we can borrow 5 million, we're still a small issuer, and I can maximize my rate of return, I'll do that instead. So there are certainly.
Essentially, pay it back as soon as, as soon as, as, as the circumstances would reduce the profit.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. And there's also spend-down requirements that also come into play with arbitrage and interest earnings. But it's certainly a different discussion than we would have had three years ago, for sure.
And what securities are they using to do that? Is it a ban, or is a, I mean, the debt is gonna have call features and everything else. So it's gotta be something that's a, that's a municipality pretty good flexibility.
Right. Most of, yeah, most of the situations where this is occurring is on bands or short-term financings, because you, you wouldn't want to lock in a bond to do that too quickly for a couple of reasons. But the big one is, what if the project came in at a different cost and you just bonded too much money? So it's certainly, it's mostly on short-term obligations at this time. Just to continue, looking at just column 16. So inclusive of that Manville Road, which gets us to one, almost 1.5 million in the '23, '24 fiscal year, things certainly fall off in '24, '25. And then layering on, or if all of the projects which we just went over, proposed projects from the pool to the Civic Space to the Brook Wall, and then the other projects, if those all came to fruition, and they were all, started to be financed with debt service hitting in '25, '26, the total general fund debt service expense would rise to about 1,150 at its peak. And then after three years, it would then start to fall, fall off. Generally, you know, $30,000, $50,000 per year as other projects started to fall off. So that would be the impact on the overall debt service. And then if we wanted to click down to that second tab, which has the impact. So what I, very similar to kind of where we were last time I presented, I took a look at each of those projects on its own and looked at what would the impact be to, a thousand dollars of assessed value and to the average homeowner? And I also looked at what is the average debt service for each of those projects? So Manville Road is kind of an outlier, because we're going to be paying that off with those ARPA monies that Eric mentioned are sitting there. So that one had an impact in '24, '25. But then future impacts, it's, it's gone, it's off the table, because nothing would be permanently financed. The real crux of what potential future impact would be is really related to the pool project is the, is the big one. So beginning with pool project, if the debt service started in the '25, '26 fiscal year, the average debt service of $481,000 a year. The cost on $100,000 of assessed value is $3.88. And the average home cost would be about $182 a year. That same sort of methodology I undertook with all of those projects, the proposed future projects. So Civic Space, same impact year, '25, '26. Estimated debt service about $16,000 a year. Impact of 13 cents per thousand or $6 a year. The Brook Wall, $120,000 of debt service a year, which is about 97 cents or $45.63. And then those other miscellaneous projects, $53,000 on average. Again, that's going to be a high, because it's an average that started very low in '24, '25, and then works its way up. But the average is $53,000, which is 43 cents or $20. The combination of all those projects, should they all come on the books and be borrowed projects, would be about $254 per year on an average tax bill.
Which in very round figures is 5%ish.
For a tax rate increase or? Right, yeah, and that depends on the growth.
Right. Okay.
Right, yeah, that's a very good point. That assumes no growth in a, in a stagnant tax base.
Right.
A step further that we, we always want to keep in mind is the village is very strong double A rating. So I took a look at just some other metrics that Moody's takes very seriously with bond ratings. The first is your net direct debt, so total outstanding divided by your total full value. And for an average double A, that ratio would be about 0.7%. Currently, the village is at about 0.26%. If we incorporated all of these projects, they were all bonded and all financed, the max you would be at is about 0.56, so still well below Moody's metric for that double A rated. The next one was the debt service percentage as a percentage of operating revenues. For a normal double A, it's about 10.7%. Currently, you're at 5.2%. If all these projects were undertaken, again, you would be well below the, the median at 9.51%, and this is using, again, a conservative 5% interest rate. So if we came below 5% on any or all of those projects, that percentage would be down as well.
Is that correct? Yeah. Sorry, in the note on that, is it correct to say that that would be 5.3% except for the Manville Road project, which gets reimbursed?
Correct. Correct.
So our debt service as a percent of operating revenues, even in the all-project scenario, after the Manville Road piece is taken off the boards, is not very much different than it is today?
Correct.
Okay.
The net direct debt, so this would be just total general fund bonds outstanding. 11.5 million is a typical double A rated. And I should mention as well, this is for a, a community with a population of 10,000, 10,000 or less. So that's what you're comparing, these comparing metrics are to. Currently, the village has about $3.7, $3.8 million of total debt. Layering on all these existing projects, 10.5 million. So you'd still be roughly a million dollars below that metric. The last one I put in here was just the full value per capita. So it would be take the full value and divide it by the population. For a typical double A rated, that's around $171,000. For the Village of Pleasantville, you're at 190. That metric doesn't change with other projects incorporated. But I just thought that was important to point out is that you're, you do have a considerable per, per capita wealth value compared to the double A rated others. So I always point that out only because if one of these other metrics, you were higher or above the median, the fact that your full value per capita is well above the median kind of offsets that. In this analysis, you're actually below the medians in all of those important debt characteristics. So that's not really, it's really a moot point, but it just bodes pointing out that financially and wealth per capita, you're considerably better off than your counterparts.
In the net direct debt for the village with all projects of $10.6 million, does that include the, the Manville Road project in there?
Yes, because that's basically, it's, it's in and then it's out. So this would be after, in 2025, '26, when all these projects would come online, you'd obviously pay off all year of your '24, '25 bond payments. So those '24, '25 payments go away, all the new projects come online '25, '26. And when we get there, you're at 10.57 million.
All right. So fair to say, based on this analysis, our bond rating is in a very solid position.
Absolutely.
So how does that relate to the significant bonding we expect to have to undertake in the water fund? Yes.
So the water fund, it's obviously, a lot of Moody's analysis is general fund focused. Obviously, if you did take on some, I understand there's two, it's water towers, correct, that may need to be replaced?
Yeah, Ben, do you have that spreadsheet? You can share screen.
You want this filed, Jonathan?
No, I'm good. Wow. He's good. Did you hear that?
Well, there he's standing.
That's why you're good.
All right, let's see if I can do the sharing. Can everybody see that's, look at that.
We got it.
All right. So I was asked to put together a very simple analysis of basically two potential water project, water project costs. So schedules A through E, so the top part of this are all related to $7 million for the cost. Type of project I have is new water, period of probable usefulness. So these could actually be bonded up to 40 years is the typical. But again, then I went through the analysis of, well, might not make sense to borrow over 40 years just because you can. So I did ranges of this from 40 down to 20 years. At 40 years, I started with a 5.5% interest rate, 35 to 535, 3520, 25, 516, and then a 20-year 5%. So a sliding scale downward, obviously, the shorter the term, the shorter, the lower the rate. And then we looked at, over 40 years, the 7 million would cost about 436, 35 years, 446, 30 years, 465, 25 years, 504, and 20 years, 561. And I think that the, the theory behind running the numbers this way is, you know, to see, and I also have the detail of all these schedules, but to see, does it really make sense to go longer term for, let's say, between 40 and 35 years, you're only saving $10,000 a year in, in debt service by stretching it out an extra five years? Does that, is that fiscally responsible? So I did that analysis, I go 7 million. And then the bottom half of the screen, we use $9 million, again, over 20 to 40-year periods. The same interest rate assumptions were used. And then the average debt service on the 40-year ranged from 561,000 for 40 years to 722 on a 20-year. And this was really very general information, just meant to give the village a snapshot of potential of what those projects may mean to your average debt service.
So since, since most of that is funded by water fees and not by property taxes, does Moody's get involved in that at all?
They would still rate these, well, yeah, if, if we finance them in the open market, which I'm assuming that it would be done that way, Moody's would still rate this. But they would go under a somewhat different set of circumstances. They would focus more in on the water fund, because that's the specific revenue source for the payment of the bonds. But they would also, at the same time, just review the village in total. But it, it should not. Um, but it, it should not impact the double A rating, um, again, because of the revenue sources from a different set of pledges.
So layering on nine million dollars in debt in the overall, uh, portfolio of our funds wouldn't affect our general fund bond rate?
Should not, no. And that's just something when we approach Moody's, we will, you know, make sure that they're very attuned to the fact that this is what the purpose of issue is. This is, uh, where the revenues will be coming from. And even though it would still be a general bond of the village, it essentially is a revenue bond because the debt service is being generated from a specific set of revenues, different from property taxes.
How many does this raise the water rate? Well, so there's about thirty-two hundred water accounts, so roughly about a hundred and eighty dollars. And what's the average?
Although not, you know, obviously, right?
Correct. What's the average person paying per year now for water?
Oh, per year? The average person probably pays just under two hundred, but it's.
Two hundred per quarter.
Eight hundred a year, so it's be about a fifteen or twenty percent increase overall?
Now, that would be layered in over time, and that, the rate study will help us.
Right.
And the rate study is also going to help us understand what the districts, because we do build a town, but we just build them as a district. So then, once again, how do we capture some of that cost with any kind of special fees associated?
And then there would be a policy decision about the piece of this that would go into the fixed rate to serve rate versus the variable consumption rate.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be, you know, people spread across all, but you could get a general sense of it. Now, Ben, uh, cover your ears, there are, um, some interest-free financing options out there that the state offers, um, whether or not we qualify for.
Sounds too good to be true.
Right, right. Um, whether or not we qualify, whether or not, um, it's more pain than it's worth, those are all things to worry about. And we, um.
All right, well, so basically, Ben, you have, uh, good news to report.
I think so, yep. And, and you're, I mean, the village is in a very, um, strong position for undertaking future capital projects. And I know that, uh, you know, you've done a lot of cash financing, which is great. But if, if the decision is to lean towards permanent bond financing in the future, you're in a very good position to, to do that.
Okay, other questions? Jonathan?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go back to your conference.
Have a great evening. All right, thanks so much. Take care.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Jonathan, in your?
Nah, I mean, I, no, uh, it, it's a lot that, um, be interesting to make sure that Moody's does indeed see clear to separate the, the two funds.
Correct.
Um, I'm, I don't believe that, I, I, I'm more in Ben's camp than not, but I do think that they've been burned. So there will be a temptation to, if you're going to double your debt, they're gonna, that might have an impact, um. But we'll see, uh, you know, I think rates are, I mean, I, I'm a Chris Paul, so I don't know, but rates feel kind of stable right now. Um, I like the idea of doing as much arbitrage as you can, um, or as long as you can. Uh, but, uh, I will say that, uh, uh, and I know that you, I'm sure you have anticipated to do it. The only thing that stood out to me was if we're going to spend six million dollars on a pool, we better reengage the community way before we actually decide to do that. Um, that's a hugely different point, price point than they were originally led to believe that the pool was going to come in at, so, um.
Right, well, first off, God willing, that's a.
Gross overestimate.
Right, uh, who knows? Then the other piece, as you know, is that there's a very significant chunk of that that's flood mitigation issue.
Correct.
Um, and so we'll have to see what we, I mean, basically, as you know, we've had this conversation before, um, we're going to go ahead with this, the pool relining, which is going on right now, right, starting today.
Yeah.
So we have a functional pool, uh, it will give us an opportunity to assess the, the, what's underneath that liner as we do this work. Um, and in the hypothetical that what comes back when we're out to bid is shocking, horrifying, or impossible, uh, we have a functional pool, so.
Yeah, no, so that's, uh, I mean, the, you know, rates suck right now. I mean, they're, they're real sticker, sticker shop. On one side of the ledger, on the other side of the ledger, they work very much in your advantage. And, or the village has got, you know, the fund balance that we do already, you know?
Yeah.
And, you know, leverage that to our advantage.
And I, I might also add, as we've talked in various points in the past, the sales tax, our piece of sales tax continues to overachieve, right?
Yeah, exactly. Although I thought that there was some disappointment on the county side at one point, I don't think, I don't know.
Yeah, it's starting to level off.
Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, if it's, uh, I mean, look, we're in an enviable position financially, uh, that gives us a lot of flexibility and we should, we should leverage the heck out of that, so, what you're doing. Good. All right, guys.
Thanks, Jonathan.
People waiting for me across the street.
All right, um, next item on my agenda was the discussion regarding the secret process of Monroe determination related to the proposed village pool reconstruction and related site planning improvements. Jennifer, Anthony, can you hear us?
Wait, yeah.
Yes.
Come on in. Hey, Anthony, hey, Jennifer.
Jennifer, you're in.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I was having a little technical issue there.
Um, so I'll, I'll set the stage, Jennifer and Anthony, and then you all can take it away. Um, now that we've layered on the flood mitigation proposal, layer on the flood mitigation work, um, the seat, we have to do another round of SECR. At first, it was a type two because it was a reconstruction of the existing pool. Now we start to mitigate the flooding, um, so we'll, we'll do another round of SECR. Within that, uh, we are now operating, um, minimally in our, in a wetland buffer, which necessitates a wetlands permit. Typically, wetlands permits are issued by the planning commission. Um, but since the impacts are rather minimal and the village board has been, um, really knee-deep in a pool project, it's the most sense, uh, for the village board to carry that function forward, which we can do via the Monroe determination. Is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's correct.
Referring to Monroe County, not James Monroe.
Correct. Which, uh, empowers the village board to have that wetlands permit fall under your authority. Um, so, uh, Anthony, Jennifer, Anthony, can you share screen and, uh, show the board that wetlands area?
Um, I cannot, Eric, I'm on my phone, and I was going to ask if you guys can share.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, the mayor will.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Bear with me, I'm almost there. Can you see that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. On board, good evening, um, but just to expand, uh, on what Eric was, was, uh, discussing initially, and then when Jennifer chimed in to further discuss the, um, the wetlands permit application. So in the, in the, in the backup that you have for this item, there's the, uh, site plan permit application. And, and, and just to, so there's no confusion, the, uh, we don't have a separate wetlands permit application. Uh, wetland disturbance is typically, um, one of the categories underneath what you see is, uh, site plan, uh, permit application. So we, the building department, uh, the village uses that application interchangeably, basically to encompass, uh, any kind of work within the wetlands. So we say a wetland permit, but you'll see that, just again, for no confusion, it's, it's typically administered, uh, through the site plan permit application. So, um, as part of this backup, we have the application that I completed. Um, the building inspector reviewed it, said it was good, but no, no issues, no, no changes. Uh, we have this plan as an attachment, and there's also, uh, De Bruin Engineering's, um, drainage study or flood mitigation study that was prepared February fourth of twenty-twenty-two, uh, which was the first of two reports, uh, that outlined a number of alternatives for flood mitigation. Um, I believe it is, it assigned a conceptual opinion of probable cost or an engineer's estimate. Uh, so that's what that backup is also, that's all part of the quote wetland permit application. Uh, but specifically discussing this plan, um, you'll see that to the, on the left-hand side of the site and on the right-hand side, so left is west, right is east. You'll see there's a line, uh, with, that kind of is curved on each side that says wetland boundary.
Right, dotted line.
Correct. And what that boundary is, is the fifth, approximately, it's a fifty-foot, um, in, inset or offset line inland, basically from the edge of a regulated water course or water body. In this case, on the west side, left side, uh, you have Nanny Hagan Brook. So basically, you draw, uh, or you offset a lot, you know, line.
Right there.
Correct, in each direction, so you go up, 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 up and over, up and over, and you basically get an outline or an offset of fifty feet inland. Correct. Um, now you'll see that in that, in that line, there's a number of activities going on. But just to, in the interest of time, and just to basically explain, I know the board's familiar with this project, but those who are watching and maybe other people have questions, uh, and even the board themselves. So the, the easiest way to decipher what's on the plan is the kind of dark gray areas, those are proposed, that's a proposed asphalt surface. So if you look within the fifty-foot wetland buffer on each side, right, there's the west side and the east side, you'll see kind of a dark shaded area. That's, that's an area that's proposed to be asphalt. Um, on the west side, it serves as an accessway to the proposed pool filter building. And on the right side, it's basically the walkway that currently goes, uh, along the backside of the recreation building and then along to the pool. So the dark gray is, uh, again, sidewalk or walkway. The kind of, there's two different hatches, there's like kind of a, uh, a marsh looking hatch, or like, almost like a bird's foot, uh, except going up, um, that's grass, so you'll see that on both sides, it's kind of like a star, or kind of like, uh, like a, you're like, almost like a bird's foot, that's the best way I can explain it. That hatched is grassed area. And then if you look on the east side, um, on the right side, you'll see there's a like, a little bit of a lighter hatch inside the, the black area. That's the dam spillway, that's where they're going to pour new concrete to basically make the spillway wider and, and, and a bit more hydraulically improved. So there's really not a lot of things going on inside those fifty-foot wetland areas. But just again, high level, on the west side, I believe there's only point, um, I think it's point oh, point oh-one or oh-eight, I'm sorry, point, um, yeah, point oh-eight acres or about thirty-four hundred square feet on the west side of any impact within the fifty-foot wetland buffer. And again, that's proposed work like regrading, um, there's a little bit of drainage improvements there. There's, uh, the dark heavy areas, the walkway, those two kind of dash lines that you see kind of going from the upper left to the bottom right within that wetland buffer on the west, that's the proposed box culvert. And if you follow those dash lines under the pool patio to the other side, on the east side, you'll see a label that says proposed six, uh, proposed five-foot high by seven-foot wide culvert, three hundred feet long. That's, that's the length of the proposed box culvert that goes from the west side of the, of the site to the east side of the site. The east side being the upstream end, that's going to flow down to the west side. So it's going to flow from right to left, if you're looking at the plan. Uh, but again, the entire culvert's not within the fifty-foot wetland area. Basically, what you have on the west side is you have walkway, you have part of the culvert, and that's on the west side, you have the right side.
Segment here.
Um, crowd, other side, Mayor, but, but it's on both sides, but just go west to east. You have grass, you have the dark shaded area, which is walkway, you got a little bit of the culvert. Um, you got a little bit of a retaining wall, kind, kind of down by the end of the culvert where it meets the Nanny Hagan, uh, Brook. And then you have a little bit of the walkway between the pool filter building and the, uh, asphalt walkway, if you will. It's not hatched, it's kind of a lighter shade. And then you have, uh, a few drainage, a little bit of drainage pipes and a manhole, kind of like on the, on the left side of that black area. But that black boundary that you see drawn around, everything inside of there, uh, basically comprises that point oh-eight acres. So you don't even have a tenth of an acre of disturbance, again, that's about thirty-four hundred square feet. That's on the west side. If you go to the east side, same deal. East side, you have the dash lines, that's, that's a little bit of the proposed box culvert. Um, you have a little bit of the existing culvert to the north of that. Um, the dark heavy line again is an asphalt walkway, you have some minor regrading, some grass inside that area, soil. And then there's a little bit of concrete spillway, and that side, I believe, is zero point one eight, zero point one zero acres. So the cumulative wetland disturbance is zero point one eight acres, which is about, uh, seventy, I think seventy-nine hundred square feet. So you don't, you know, it's, it's under, it's under a quarter acre, um, it's minimal, um, it's, it's, it's based on necessity. Uh, I wouldn't say there's any over excavation, or this is, this is what you see, the disturbance within the wetlands is, is essential to the construction of the flood mitigation improvements. Really, that's what most of this is, minus the walkways, everything is related to the, um, to visit the flood mitigation.
All right.
And then you'll see a report there on board, that's, that's, that's attached.
We've got the De Bruin report from twenty-twenty-two and all of that, so. All right, so all of that, uh, is logical, and, uh, Jennifer, we would, uh, resolve to, uh, make a Monroe determination to be the lead agency.
Right, exactly, um, because this is a government project, you have the ability to either waive requirements altogether, uh, from your zoning or other land use regulations, or as being, as, as being proposed here, transfer approval authority, uh, from one board to another. So whereas here, the, the wetland permit would otherwise be the subject of an approval authority by the planning commission, what's being proposed is to transfer that to the board trustees, since you, um, uh, you would be lead agency, uh, under SECR, and otherwise, the project remains under your jurisdiction. So it's, it's for purposes of streamlining and efficiency, uh, for a village project to transfer the approval authority for the wetland permit to your board.
Okay, uh, and, and we have such a resolution.
We will have it at the next agenda meeting, uh, uh, next agenda, and Mr. Mayor, I sent you the email with the thirteen points that.
So Resolution three seventy-one issuing determination about the current work is unrelated to the bigger. That purely about the replacement of the liner.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and when you make your, your determination, uh, at your next meeting, you, Eric just mentioned the, the balancing of factors, um, under this, uh, court case from nineteen eighty-eight, which really transferred this consideration from a, if you recall, back in the eighties and before, it was a test of, is it a government function? Or is it a more of a proprietary or, or, or corporate function that the municipality is undertaking? And that's what made the determination of whether, um, uh, whether the, the local zoning would apply. Um, in nineteen eighty-eight, there was a, a New York State Court of Appeals case called County of Monroe that changed that test to be more of a balancing of, of the interests test. Um, the presumption, as what is shown on the screen, the presumption is that the code applies to municipal projects, but the board of trustees has the ability to apply these, um, these factors, these various interests, uh, to determine whether the code should apply, or whether certain portions of the code or all of the code should be, um, exempted for the project.
Right, and so we would pursue each of those and discuss the balancing, uh, piece at the next meeting when we have a resolution proposed.
Exactly, and that resolution, we'll, we'll have a draft of that balancing for you.
Okay, great. Sounds like we know what we need to know. Appreciate it, Jennifer. Thank you, Anthony.
Sure.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. Look at that, seven fifty-seven. We're just like military, military precision. All right, let me get my ducks in a row here, and then we'll start the regular meeting. Good evening, all. Welcome to the village board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November thirteenth. We're beginning our regular meeting, uh, we began at seven with a work session, uh, discussing several different items. Our work sessions are recorded, uh, as well as our regular meetings. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting or any previous meeting at PCTV seventy-six dot org. Likewise, uh, you can go to Pleasantville-ny.gov and pick up the, uh, Zoom links for our board meeting as well as for meetings of other boards and commissions. Uh, as always, you are welcome to join us here at Eighty Wheeler Avenue, but you are also, uh, welcome to sign on via Zoom at the link you find at Pleasantville-ny.gov, uh, and follow along, uh, via Zoom. A couple of announcements to make, and then we have, uh, a couple of items first on our agenda. First, I wanted to say thank you to all who participated in the Veterans Day ceremony we had, uh, this past Friday. Um, thanks as always to the Fanter Nickel American Legion posts, uh, those guys are, uh, the core elements of our annual Veterans Ad Memorial. Of our annual Veterans and Memorial Day service and, uh, we honor them. Uh, as well as appreciate their assistance, uh, for Veterans Day. Also a big shout out to the Plundell School District and to, uh, several Plundell High School students. Uh, who came and participated as vocalists, really strikingly talented young people, uh, and, uh. They had a day off from school and chose to spend a chunk of it, uh, assisting us and, uh, performing for the audience. So. A shout out to all. Thank you very much. I also want to touch, a number of people had commented and there was some chatter back and forth on, uh, social media. About the recent project, uh, uh, repave Wheeler Avenue. So as you all know, uh, there's been a many months long project undertaken by Con Edison to replace. A, a very old gas main all along Wheeler Avenue and then making a left turn and heading up the first block of. Bedford towards Tompkins Avenue, uh, a difficult venture that had to be done. And, uh, which involved, uh, digging all along Wheeler Avenue at some places digging very deep. Uh, and then once the new main was, uh, in place, then digging across. Uh, to each building that has gas service, uh, to provide a new gas supply. So all of that. Uh, I, I will, uh, uh, freely say I think was done about as well as one could hope. Uh, Con Ed's contractor Giampa. Um, I thought did a remarkably good job of a project that was inevitably going to be difficult, uh, for everybody. Uh, but the end result of that is that they were required, uh, to mill and pave the area where they. Had dug all this stuff up, uh, curb to curb. So, um. As you know, or perhaps you don't, as we get into the fall. Uh, paving projects get harder and harder to come by. Paving contractors are all under heavy. Pressure to get stuff done because the paving, the asphalt plants close. Uh, usually at some point in December and there is no more major paving going on until they reopen in the spring. So. Uh, we got word, I think on a Wednesday, that Con Ed had found a contractor who was able to do this work on Saturday. Uh, and were confronted with the choice of going ahead and doing that. Uh, or saying, no, you can't do that and likely not having this work done for quite a few more months. So. Uh, we made the decision to go ahead, messenger down as best we could, uh, but you know, folks said, well, why is it being done? Why is it being done on a Saturday? Why can't it be done in the middle of the night? For all those reasons. We decided to go ahead and, uh, rip the Band-Aid off a difficult project and get the job done. Uh, certainly, uh, a difficult day for lots of folks. We know that. Uh, but the job is done. We have nice new paving, all been restripped at Con Ed expense and we're back in business. So, um. Just a, a shout out to those who were concerned that this was the result of nobody paying attention. No, it was the result of a lot of people paying attention. And making, I think, a reasoned decision about what in the end, uh, was the best balance of, of, uh. Trouble and benefit to the community. So. Uh, with that, I have a few other announcements. I can leave those for later. We have two things tonight, uh, uh, to do first. First is, uh. First on our agenda is Pleasantville Lofts LLC. Uh, that's the enterprise, uh, building, the building at Seventy Memorial. Right next to the post office. They have appealed the decision and determination of the Pleasantville Architecture Review Board. Uh, concerning Seventy Memorial Plaza. Welcome Fred.
Thank you.
We know who you are, but for the record, if you could identify yourself.
Thank you. Fred Daniels appearing for Pleasantville Lofts LLC.
Welcome, sir.
Gentlemen, I had submitted, if you don't have it, I had extra copies of the appeal.
We have it.
Okay, then I'd like to just set this up in a little bit of the factual and reality.
Okay, yes.
The facts. In April. Pleasantville Lofts submitted an application. To amend the roof plan, the mechanical equipment on the roof at Seventy Memorial.
Right.
Uh, I was not involved with the appearances before the R A B between April. And October. But to recap, in essence. The, the R A, the discussed. Their opinion, and that's a word I'm going to rely upon very heavily. Of what the mechanical structures appear to create. As far as an aesthetic value to the community. It went back and forth. And the owner developer was willing to revisit. Looking at the equipment and did make some changes. On October twelfth. I appeared before the R A B and at that point. We came before the R A B to say, basically, we have done what we think is appropriate. In a sense of cooperation. And, uh, I specifically. Call attention to the board. That. The mechanical equipment certainly fell within their purview. And authority to review. However, there's a section of a very, very specific statute, which is. One eight five five seven C two C. Of the Pleasantville Code. Which basically does something that I think is very rare in legislation. And because it's so rare. I think it compels the R A B. To look at the verbiage and strictly construe it. And what that does in effect is, it says that. There has to be. A preponderance of evidence. To find inappropriateness. And it goes so far as to say, and I quote. The finding is not based on personal preference as to taste or architectural style. So. There can be a finding of inappropriateness, but it has to be based upon. In essence, a review of what impact. That aesthetic issue has on the community. It's not a question of someone's opinion. As to whether it isn't exactly what it could be in the best sense of an aesthetic review. But it has to be shown that what's there is creating a negative. Impact on the community. The building went up, the structures are there, property value across the street diminished by ten percent. Eighteen people who live on the corner came in to oppose it. Something of a, of an es- in essence of reality versus opinion. So the facts are, we start in April, we go to October. I requested a roll call vote with a statement on the record by each member of the board. As to what was the finding of inappropriateness. Now. Respectfully, the chairman used some verbiage quoting from the statute. To say that it had a negative impact on the community. But that's all that was said. And the votes that were taken followed suit by saying, yes, it's inappropriate. Yes, it's inappropriate, or rather, excuse me, no, I find appropriateness. No, I find appropriateness. So the resolution to amend. The, uh, the plan was voted down. It's interesting, and I comment that the one positive vote we received. Was from a member of the board who is an architect. Interesting. In terms of a professional evaluation of what was really being considered. Um, I've given you a lot of details of the statement. Facts, I've given you a very, I think, clear direction to the language and statute. Again, let me just quote from the statute. The negative effect has to be one or more of the harmful effects. That the statute presides, and that is. A detriment to desirability, property values or development of the surrounding areas in proximity. To the design feature in question. And respectfully, we think that. If the board is now looking at what the R A B did. You have to take the facts. As they line up. Take the opinion in the middle. Disregard the opinion. And based on nothing being authored of an evidentiary nature that really says. What the statute says, something bad happened as a result of this to property values. It's totally wrong. It's not there. And as a result of that, this board has the authority on an appeal. To reverse the R A B decision. Um, I know that sometimes the board would prefer to take a step back. Perhaps adjourn this to another meeting, um, but I, I think with all due respect. The record that I attached. Specifically uses words spoken by the board members. And in particular, the chairman. That do nothing but contradict the statute. When you say, in my opinion. And I'm virtually quoting what was said by the board members. When you state it is my opinion. That is totally contradictory to the language of the statute. It's, it's very clear. It's a strict construction. It has to be applied as it's written. And the term opinion is carved out in the statute as being. To go back to the truth of the statute, inappropriate. So. We would respectfully request that the application at this point be granted. That the decision of the R A B be reversed. And that we can have that addressed at this meeting. As opposed to having the necessity of perhaps the void digestiveness any further.
So Jennifer, you have anything to add to that? Jennifer, Redhead's on here on Zoom.
Sorry, just needed to unmute myself. Good evening, everyone. Um. Now, I think, um, I think Mr. Daniels, uh, presented the facts fairly, um. I, I, I'm in a similar position to him. I, um, did not attend most of the meetings at which. This application was heard by the A R B. I was in attendance at the, um, October eleventh meeting. When the, uh, A R B did vote on the matter. Um, the application was before the, the A R B at least six times. Um, I have provided the board with the minutes, uh, from those meetings. So you have that before you. Uh, and the board did vote on October eleventh from, uh, by a vote of four to one, uh, to deny the application for the amended roof plan. Or the mechanical units, um, atop the building. Um. I would just note that, you know, that the, the way the code is laid out, it provides that. And I'll, I'll echo a little bit of what Mr. Daniels. Um, recited to you, but there are. The board has to find by a preponderance of the evidence. That, um, the application would be detrimental to either the, the desirability. The property values or the development of the surrounding areas. So. One of those three factors has to be present. There's a detrimental impact to one of those three things. Due to significant design features and the code lists a whole bunch of design features, one of which is exposed mechanical equipment. Which is exactly what we're looking at here. Um. If the board finds that by a preponderance of the evidence, that one of those three negative things are present. Um, then they can deny the application. The code does state specifically that that. Finding cannot be based on quote unquote, personal preference. As to taste or architectural style. Now, I know Mr. Daniels talked a lot about, um. The board, ex- board members expressing their opinion. I think opinion is something different than personal preference. I think opinion as the board was, was expressing it was their opinion based on their review and assessment of. The application materials and the application that was before them. Um. So I, I would just note that one caveat that I don't equate personal preference to be the same as. One's opinion based on a review of the application materials before them. Um. I would just note a couple of procedural things for your attention, um. So this appeal is before you pursue it to a provision in your code that allows for an administrative appeal. Of a denial of an A R B application, uh, directly to your board as opposed to going straight to court. Um, the next step, should the applicant be aggrieved by your decision? Would be Westchester County Supreme Court via an Article seventy eight proceeding, um. But hopefully, hopefully we won't get there. Um. Uh, you do have under your code thirty days. Uh, to hear and decide the appeal that's before you. That thirty days started to tick when the applicant submitted its appeal to the village clerk's office. Um, so by my calculation, that thirty day period expires November twenty third. Which is in advance of your next board meeting, which I believe is on the twenty seventh, if I'm correct. Um, so if you're not in a position to make a decision tonight. Um, you should ask the applicant whether they would consent to a brief extension. Of that thirty day period to get you to your next meeting, um. And, and hopefully be in a position to make a decision at that meeting, if not tonight. Um, one other thing I want to mention is that. The, um, the code does not provide an explicit standard of review for the board of trustees. Uh, to review this appeal. Um, so for example, like arbitrary and capricious. Um, or, or preponderance of the evidence as there, there is a standard for the A R B. Um, so my recommendation is that the board does review this de novo, which means basically from the be- beginning. That you review the whole record that was before the A R B, um, and, and make your determination. Uh, based on all of that information that was before the A R B. So. With that, I'll turn it back over to the, the mayor and the board unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you for that, Jennifer. So let me say, Jennifer already referred to it. Uh, Fred, we're, we're without, as you know, two of our board members tonight. And, uh, we had. Paid all five board members being here two weeks from tonight, the twenty seventh. Uh, so it's certainly not our goal to extend this beyond that, but we would ask. Uh, your, uh, acceptance of an extension of a few days to allow us to review this and then. Decide upon it and take whatever action we take two weeks from today on the twenty seventh.
I, I, I'll speak to, right, but one comment, and I'm compelled to comment on what Jennifer said.
Sure.
The, the key here, I think, is what she hit on, which is the whole record.
Which she provided to us in.
Correct. Now, notwithstanding the fact that I did not appear at meetings between, uh, April. And October, I had the opportunity to speak to the people who work there on behalf of my client. Plus look at different excerpts from various meetings. The record is replete. With any. Information. That really can be considered evidentiary. There's a constant discussion back and forth between representatives of Pleasantville Lofts who appeared. And the R A B, where the R A B made. A suggestions as to what they felt were aesthetically. Improving the situation. In a six month period, there would have been, I believe, a full opportunity. To take a look at what impact. The mechanical systems on the roof had. In, in terms of the surrounding property area. That wasn't done. And I respectfully submit, it wasn't done because the negative impact, truthfully, is zero. So when you're trying to find something. That has a zero level of negativity and it doesn't exist. You tend not to look for it. And that's exactly what the R A B knew and that's exactly what they did. They didn't look for something they couldn't find. Now, as Jennifer said, there is a difference semantically between opinion. And personal preference. The statute says, again, the finding is not to be based on personal preference. But when. The opinion. Has nothing behind it. To support a conclusion. It is no longer an opinion. It is totally personal preference. Semantically. What the board tried to do in a number of statements at the October meeting. Was cite the statute and say, it is not my. Uh, excuse me. It is not based upon personal preference. It is an opinion we've reached. But again, you, we can't circuitously come to a decision. Because you want to without having a basis to get there. And that's really where we're at. The basis doesn't exist. The board did not even endeavor to find the basis. So what you're left with is nothing more than an opinion. Um, uh, excuse me, uh, uh, personal preference. And I think if you, if you do take the time, and I will speak to my client in a moment regarding the adjournment. The, the verbiage used by the board members. Clearly set up what their idea was to something else that might look better. It didn't have any foundation. There was no basis to say, we've conducted some type of appraisal. Investigation. We, we've taken a look at pricing in the area. We've done something. Concrete as opposed to saying, I think that if you put up screening or I think if you did this, it would be better. May I have a moment?
Sure. Let me just say on the subject of the, of the, um, uh, modest extension, obviously that's up to you and your client. Uh, we're not going to act tonight because we don't have five of us here. And if you don't, well, if you don't give us the extension, we'll simply have to have a special meeting, which we'll do. But I, I don't know that it serves anybody's purpose to buy a couple of days. So.
My, my client has no problem with the extension.
All right. That's great. Thank you.
With incorrectly for the record on you, R A B versus A R B.
It's okay. So let me just say, having, uh, uh, I, we've heard your argument. We have it in detail. I appreciate that. We have the entire. Uh, set up minutes of all of this, uh, uh, for us. For these months, but ju- just to push back in a gentle way. Uh, uh, not pushing back at your theoretical argument, but just the record of what happened. The, and you'll correct me if I have misconstrued this. These H V A C units ended up higher than was originally envisioned for. Reasons that evolved in the course of the construction of the building. And so they were more visible than. Anyone wanted. And am I, am I correct in saying it wasn't? A happy development for the owner either. Everybody said, ah, you know, why did that have to be? But there it is, right? Yeah. So I, I don't, I, I don't, we are where we are. I don't mean to retract. I just wanted to make, make the point that. That the, the whole conversation with the A R B arose, if I understand it correctly, and based on the review I made so far of the materials were handed to us. There was a back and forth of like, oh God, you know, this isn't the best thing. We're going to work on how to make it look better. We're not that happy about it either, you know, all of that, right?
I agree. It has to be put respectfully in a context of. When you have a project of a certain magnitude, when you start. You have a very predetermined course of conduct. That predetermined course of conduct takes a hundred. Your terms at a minimum. You start to finish.
I don't need to challenge any of that. I totally understand.
So many other respects.
Right. I totally understand.
Were made to improve a situation. At the cost of the developer, adjustments were made to make the project better.
I understand. I, I totally.
Right. We all where we are.
Yeah. I, I, I didn't mean to say any of that to suggest that, that we're, uh, arguing with your, with your. Argument at all at the present time, just to say, you know, the conversation with the A R B, whichever, however it ended up. There was a history there that everybody, you know, had a fingerprint on. So. All right. So if it's okay with you.
It will be on the twenty seventh.
We will take action on the twenty seventh, and I expect as a moment all five of us to be there. We'll take this responsibility seriously. Uh, w- w- with Jennifer's assistance and, uh, we will have an answer for you on the twenty seventh. It might be that if we have questions or somebody wants a side visit, uh, we, we would reach out between now and then, but. We'll get this done for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, next up on our agenda, uh, our police chief Eric Rutter is here. Um, with, uh, the next iteration of. The Police Department Quarterly Presentations, uh, welcome Chief Rutter.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As always, it is. My distinct pleasure to be here to speak to the board and to the community about what's going on. With their police department, with your police department. So. We can, we'll begin, we'll just jump right in.
All right. Let me show the screen.
Okay, great. All right. So we begin, uh, with the usual, uh, our usual statistics, our calls for service. Um, not a great variation in any, uh, particular category. Again, I'll just remind the board a number of these slides, uh, I don't necessarily put in here to. Uh, speak on specifically or directly, but more just as a record keeping and should anybody, uh, watch the, uh. The meeting in the future.
The comparison number is the previous quarter or the same quarter previous year?
Uh, previous quarter.
Okay.
Uh, so we can go next. Great. Again, oh, little typo there. The A is in patrol, but that's all right. Uh, but you're seeing just basically, uh, some significant, some relatively consistent numbers. Um, and this is the previous five quarters. So you do see, uh, same time, uh, last year as well. Next. All right. Our community policing initiative. So in this quarter, uh, we did, uh, have our back to school. Uh, again, our relationship with schools is, uh, extremely important to us. We take great pride in it, uh, and we have seen the benefits of it. We'll see in a little while, some of the benefits of our relationships with the schools. Uh, come to realization. But, uh, as we go back into the, back into the school season, we have, uh, more concerns as far as pedestrian and driver safety. We have our school crossing guards return to work. We have, uh, our, the resumption of our, uh, school walkthroughs, which we do every day. Uh, we have our youth officer detective who, uh, is now teaching classes at both the high school and the middle school and directly interacting with the kids and building relationships. Um, on topics of note. And of course, uh, you know, we worked through the summer on a couple of different initiatives in regards to school safety. School safety is the number one goal for the board. The school board this year, uh, we are continuing to assist them and work with them to make sure that from. The most mundane to the most extreme, uh, situations are considered. The relationship again is very good, whether it is something, uh, you know, an upcoming special event. For instance, around the football games, we have regular meetings around the safety and security of. Of everyone involved with the football games because they are large community events on a large public space. Um, down to incidents that go on, um, you know, in always and things like that. The school decides that they need to reach out to us. We're more than happy to speak with them. Uh, at any time.
Before we jump off that, could you just touch very briefly on in, in enhanced enforcement of. Parking, no standing, crazy behavior, uh, related to school pickup and drop off. We certainly had a lot of comment about that.
Sure. Uh, obviously it's a concern. I would say the beginning of the school year, everybody sort of needs that reminder as far as that we take these types of issues seriously. It does seem as if this year, the, um, the length and duration of maybe. Less than optimal behavior by people either dropping off or picking up or parking around the schools has extended. Uh, we are committed to, to continually doing traffic enforcement in different areas. Uh, around the schools being as visible as possible. We do, uh, still face the challenge and we'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation as far as. Uh, our need for crossing guards. So we do sometimes have officers who are relegated to, uh, not relegated, but who are covering crossing guard. Posts at certain times, um, but we take, uh, we, we give a, a number, we've gotten the number that the mayor said, a number of recommendations and. Concerns from, from constituents as far as, um, you know, where is, where is the bad behavior happening? We welcome that. We encourage it. The last thing that we want to hear is that somebody said for the last month, I've seen this and I never. I didn't, I didn't think you'd be interested or I didn't want to reach out to you. This is what we want to reach out to. We're going to manage our resources as best we can. To make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as possible, especially around schools.
So did something change specifically from previous years when school started?
I mean, that's more echo than it is anything else. Uh, I, I just, I feel as if. Usually by the end of September, everyone has sort of settled into their routine and they recognize not to park, you know, from here to corner when it posted. Um, for whatever reason, uh, this year it seems as if this is stretched into October and even into November. We're still dealing with, we're still dealing with. Um, you know. Bad behavior, thoughtless behavior of people behind wheel, uh. Dropping their kids off at school, picking them up from school. So it's, you know, we are obviously part of the, the issue also. Manville Road and Bedford Road are, are, are cut through streets. So we're, we're having people who aren't even residents who are regularly using those roadways at those school pickup, especially drop off times. Um, and so we found that correcting the behavior, which normally we thought would take a little bit less time has taken. A little bit longer than usual, but why that is, I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
All right. Thank you for that.
Sure. Uh, September twenty second, we were honored for the second year in a row to be the, uh, the recipients of goodwill at the Pleasantville High School football game. Uh, so if you want to go to the next slide, um, this is a first responder appreciation night that the school and, and some of the booster clubs put together. So here are members of the. Uh, Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Next. Uh, Pleasantville Fire Department. Next. Pleasantville Police Department. Only one of us decided to wear a white shirt. Everybody else wanted the blue. Uh, and finally next. Uh, so we were all welcomed out onto the field. In addition, there was. Uh, and I apologize if I forget anybody, but the Department of Environmental Conservation Police, the Mount Pleasant Police Department, the, uh, Metro North Police Department. Environment, Environmental Protection. Uh, so basically any. First responder agency that provided services directly in our geographic footprint of our school district was invited to come and be part of this ceremony. Uh, happened before the game, uh, culminated with the national anthem and a flyover by the Westchester County, Westchester County Police was there. Westchester County Aviation Unit. Um. So, uh, I know that we're still stinging from this weekend's, uh, football game, but I will say. That for the last two years I have done the coin toss in the last two years. We have pretty good success. Those were pretty, those were pretty important games that I.
And you didn't do it this.
Well, I, I didn't flip the coin at this section.
That was against them.
Yeah. So, uh, and then of course on September thirtieth, uh, a very large portion of town came out for the block party. It was, I think. Um, a great success, was success on our part. We, the. The footprint, obviously the weather seemed to be better than it was, uh, in the, in the initial one. And so that really supported people coming out. Uh, the footprint was, it was, you know, we total a lot of time and effort, uh, working with everybody involved to make sure that we were prepared for that day. And I think it went off extremely well. Uh, next. Uh, Detective Charletti, as we go back to school, we don't just, uh, service the, uh, public schools, but we also have our preschools that we go to. And Detective Charletti was at tutor time, discussing the role of police officers in the community. We welcome and encourage. Um, groups, whether it's Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Scouts in general, um. Preschools, we're looking for any sort of group that we can, we can get in front of and have our officers interacting with kids. So we, we look forward to that and we welcome that. Uh, on September twelfth, I attended the, uh, Westchester Jewish Council's annual high holiday security briefing. Uh, there'll be more on this topic in a few minutes, but, uh, it was. Uh, extremely, extremely strong turnout. It was in white planes. It was in general, obviously, as the high holidays come in for the Jewish community. Security concerns, uh, ramp up. And so this was all of Westchester, all the different Jewish, uh. Uh, houses of worship were invited to come, different municipalities. There's probably fifteen or so different police municipalities who were there. Just talking about what we can do in anticipation, how we can build relationships, some, some very practical tips for. Um, keeping those congregants safe and obviously, um. Took on a different meaning, uh, on October seventh, but we'll get back to that in a few minutes. So some calls of note. Uh, on July fourth. We had a situation in which, uh, somebody was stealing things from, uh, seven eleven store on Bedford Road. As they were exiting the store, they were confronted by a clerk. The, uh, the interaction became physical. And so we just went from a larceny to a robbery. Uh, the person fled the store. There was a person who was outside, Mr. Brian Miska. He's a resident of Briar Cliff. He observed what was going on. He actually secured the person, took them to the ground and held them there until, uh, we responded, until the police got there. So I just want to make sure I, uh. Give Mr. Miska his, his, uh, proper due for his selfless act of securing, helping us secure the village. Um, so in the end, we had, uh, two charges against that defendant for robbery as well as assault in a third degree. Um, so again, thanks to Mr. Miska for his, uh. For his community mindedness and his bravery in handling that situation. And, uh, felt good to, to. Get that perpetrator off the street for sure. Absolutely. Next. Uh, on July twenty first, our detective division completed an investigation into some criminal mischief that had gone on in an abandoned building. Uh, I bring this up mainly because A, the damage was extensive, but B also because, uh, that investigation was aided in great part by, um. Neighbors bypass, uh, passersby, people who had observed, uh, things going on and were able to alert the police to. What they believed to be something amiss. And it turns out they were right. We were able to conclude that investigation. Uh, charged a couple of felonies against, uh, a local resident who was doing damage inside that building. Uh, next. And on July thirty first, you may have seen this one, uh, this, we've got a little bit of, uh, press coverage. Uh, we had. Uh, Officer Cole Hatchard was on patrol on the midnight tour and was alerted to the possibility of a vehicle being operated by someone who was wanted in Virginia. For malicious wounding with a firearm, might be driving past. She found that car and that person inside. It was a short. Short time where that person did not immediately pull over to the side of the road, but they were eventually apprehended in the parking lot of the diner. At the time, um, two firearms were recovered, including the one that was used. In the incident in Virginia. So that person was brought in front of the judge, held as a fugitive from justice. Um. So again, a, a C felony for the criminal possession of a weapon and an E felony for criminal possession of a firearm. And they were, uh, held until they could be returned to Virginia and the, the extradition could be worked out. But obviously, um. Officer Cole Hatchard for locating the vehicle her and Officer Rivera for securing this person. We had assistance from the Mount Pleasant Police Department as well on that one. Um, so really a, a team effort and, um, intel from the Westchester County Police Department. Really a group effort getting an extremely dangerous person off the street.
Great.
All right. So our overtime hours, you're seeing, um, a little bit of a decline from where we have been last quarter and, and a. Uh, reasonable decline for some of the quarters that preceded it. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Again, we break down a little bit of sort of where the, where the overtime is generated from. Again, that total tour coverage, I spelled patrol right on this one. That's good for me. Uh, on the total tour coverage, uh, that goes to basically any sort of tour in which. Um, we simply just don't have enough people. So it could be a personal day, it could be vacation time, it could be a court appearance, but if we had more people. Um, that we would potentially, uh, to court appearance would go in there, but, uh, shift coverage basically goes into that tour, total tour cover. Uh, if you go to the next slide, just for a little bit better visual, you can see sort of how we declined in our overtime recently. Uh. As we get into personnel and staffing. Um. You'll see, we, we do expect those numbers to, 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 to rise up again a little bit. We have lost, um. Uh, we had one officer who transferred out just recently. It wasn't in this particular, um, quarter, but we are going to feel the impact of that at least through the end of the year. Um. So we are definitely, it seems as if in the last three years or so, our hiring process has been continued. Um, so it's a good thing. We're very happy with the quality candidates that we've secured. We have a very, we think, robust process for. Finding and, and, uh. Uh, you know, recruiting and retaining these people, but, uh, we do seem to keep needing more and more people.
Um, so as you look at the age and career progress of your force. Is it staying relatively constant? So we should expect this kind of turnover annually or is it getting younger or? You know, where do you stand?
So we're a twenty-three person department. Uh. Currently probably about fifty fifty between officers who would expect to do twenty and officers who would expect to do twenty-five years during changes in the pension system. So you would anticipate. That we would be usually replacing about one a year. Um, we have up that. Basically, unfortunately, what has happened and what seems to happen is we end up getting. Um, we have up that basically unfortunately what has happened and what seems to happen is we end up getting the, these, uh, we lose people in waves. So we, we hired a great deal of people about 20 years ago. We hired nine people within the span of 18 months, which is probably unprecedented in this department. Uh, and that was for a lot of reasons. Um, but now we're seeing a lot of those people who are coming up. Uh, additionally, we do have, we have had some officers who tried to pursue, uh, interested in pursuing, um, their career in different departments. We obviously are, um, we think we've built a pretty good place here to work, but if people think that there was other things they'd be more interested in pursuing, then we support that. Um, so we have seen some people who we would expect to retire, some people who left who we weren't necessarily expecting to leave. Um, again, we seem to think we're getting towards the end of the anticipated retirement. There's still a few more people who are close, but not quite there yet. Uh, those people may stay on. They may do more than the 20 years that are, uh, required. Um, but if not, you know, we, we, we take very seriously the need to bring in, um, a workforce that we can all be proud of. So at the board meeting back, one of the board meetings in July, we did, uh, have sworn in our newest officer Gabriel Salome. Uh, he has completed his field training. He now counts towards, um, our personnel roles. Again, we're currently looking to build, uh, at least one position and expect, uh, another officer, another, uh, one of the sergeants to come off the books sometime early next year. So we potentially will be looking to promote sergeant, uh, and look forward to, to doing that. Uh, next. So we hired, uh, as for those of you who filed these presentations, it's kind of a long process in getting our second community service worker position filled. We were able to find somebody who actually had been employed by the village previously and came very highly recommended. Um, he made it through the civil service process. Uh, and so we brought Jeffrey Osziello on board. He has been doing a great job. Uh, we, we really find it important to have two community service workers, um, between all the different tasks that we ask them to do. It just, when we have one, it's, it's just, it's just too much work for one person. And so something ends up falling to the wayside. Um, so we're very happy to have, to have Jeffrey here and he has been doing a great job for us. Uh, next, obviously school guard staffing. We're going to have a, a conversation with the pedestrian committee next month. Um, and I know school guard staffing is, is something that is very much on the front of their mind as it is in the front of ours. Um, it is a constant. Our school guards tend to be, um, retired people. And so they also, this is a part-time job. And so they also have significant family or other concerns that they are, um, dealing with. And so even when we are fully staffed, even when we don't have necessarily a full-time position to offer someone, to hire someone for, we still have needs for fill-ins. So what we will normally do in those positions is if we have, uh, filling guards, we call them first. Then we go to the, uh, community service workers to fill those positions. And lastly, it goes to police officers to potentially, um, fill those spots. So we are, um, continuing, we're working with, uh, school district, pedestrian committee to try to find a way to really get the word out there about how, how severe our need is for crossing guards. Unfortunately, this is sort of, uh, these concerns and these, these struggles are mirrored in a lot of other jurisdictions that have crossing guards as well. It's, it's a difficult hiring process to go through. Next, please. All right. So, uh, department training. So, um, the last time I was here, actually, I believe the mayor asked me specifically because it was the same day as this, uh, rescue task force training that we participated in. And I said, oh, hold on, wait till, wait till next quarter. Well, the next quarter is here. So, uh, a rescue task force, basically, um, so the model in dealing with, uh, with emergencies and critical incidents, uh, particularly in schools, but in any location has really developed over time. Uh, originally, uh, our response to, uh, an incident would include, would wait, would be waiting until the scene is completely secured to start removing injured people. We have found through experience that that is not, um, the safest or most, um, it's not the best way to preserve life in, in these types of situations. And so a rescue task force is created. It becomes a, um, it's a small group of combination of ambulance, EMS workers, department personnel and police officers. And what we basically do is we cordon off an area where injured people are. We call it a warm zone. It's not quite hot. It's not definitely not cold. So it's a warm zone. And we bring in these, these task forces to extract injured people even before potentially we have completely secured the scene. So, um, while that makes perfect logical sense, the logistics of this are daunting. And so we've been encouraged by the county and, um, and really all the mutual aid, uh, participants throughout Westchester County to sort of train this model, this RTF model. I've said this before, Jeffy Mollman, our lieutenant, is the mutually coordinator for Zone A, which is the northern part of Westchester County. So we have the benefit of his experience. He's been to numerous, whether it's, uh, drills or, uh, events that require mutual aid response. Uh, and so he brings his expertise back. And so if you can go to the next slide. Um, so we reached out and this, this is planning has been, uh, this, this training has been in planning and in discussion for months. Uh, it began with the ambulance corps doing some training at the school, then they incorporated the fire department and incorporated and merged them in. And then, uh, for the third round of training, we came in as well. So this is a, um, a representation now. So keep in mind, you see numerous fire department personnel, you see numerous ambulance personnel there. The police are, there's a group of police, I think in the, in the next picture. Um, but all three agencies, all three disciplines coming together on a hot Monday night for the ambulance crew, for the fire department on their own time to make sure that we work this out and gave everybody, um, the first understanding of what this looks like. Uh, Captain Zappalata from the ambulance corps, Chief Asterios Kavino from the fire department. We all worked together. Uh, this training went extremely well. Uh, we incorporated a couple of the things into the training prior to the other agencies getting there, but then once the three of us, the three agencies all together started working, um, really got a feel for what it would be like were we to experience something like this. We, we had the, the cooperation of the schools. They gave us the facility. Uh, we had the students who played as actors. Um, and so the, the training was, I think, eye-opening and, uh, very useful for everybody. So it's a couple of the pictures there. Can we go through the next? You can see the scale, um, of the number of personnel who volunteered to come out. You can go next. Um, so again, I just, thanks to so many people who, um, put that training together, participated in, and it was really the great, it was great for the entire community to come out. Uh, one of the trainings that we did, uh, Detective Sergeant Zane certifies our police carbine, carbine instructor. Uh, Officer Casal attended sexual offense trauma training and Detective Smith completed investigative photography training. Again, three very various, um, trainings for us to attend, but again, all three of them critical to our mission. Next. So, uh, as I said, uh, we attended the, um, I attended, uh, the high holiday, the security briefing. Uh, obviously on October 7th, everything changed. Uh, we had a great relationship. We've always had a great relationship with the synagogue. Uh, their security team is first rate. Their administrator is extremely dialed into what's going on around the country and around the world. We, prior to October 7th, we were regularly informed of when they would have celebrations, when they would have, uh, services. And we really worked well together. Obviously following October 7th, um, the recognition of the need for increased cooperation, even better, um, better response, better communication was evident and we have worked very hard to do that. We've done, we've been available and at a number of their larger services, having a presence there. We're continually, uh, working with them both on um, immediate need as well as ongoing, you know, sort of chronic concerns that they have. So, um, you know, obviously the community is, as we all work, is rattled by the events October 7th. Um, and we are doing our best to, uh, to keep them, some prayers and work with them to make sure that we are providing them all the security that we can.
And you, you might also add that you were in Israel on October 7th when this all began, uh, of a training program.
Yeah. So, um, the, the board had graciously, um, approved my attendance at a, uh, a seminar, a law enforcement seminar. So there was a group of us, about 24 law enforcement executives from Westchester, Rottling, Nassau, NYPD, who have traveled to Israel on, uh, we arrived Friday morning, the 6th, um. We also had about eight, uh, there's a couple of security groups that worked together. We were guests of the Israeli government. They put together this, um, forum, the Israeli government, Israeli, where they're bringing in people to talk about combating terrorism, anti-Semitism. So we had, um, Saturday, we were scheduled to go to Tel Aviv and then we were going to begin the training on Sunday. Um, and then Saturday morning, everything kind of went sideways. So throughout the day, we sheltered in place and we stayed safe. And then Sunday morning we were, um, we were evacuated out. So our time in, our time in country was short. Uh, I did, uh, do a presentation at the synagogue about that experience and, uh, along with another member of the answer, uh, and a member of the group who was there as well, who's a member of that congregation. Uh, and one of the, the takeaways that I had from that was especially in light of everything that has happened, I feel honored to have been there. Uh, when it began, it obviously gave me a completely different perspective on everything that's going on. Um, so, uh, uh, we were not the story, you know, we were, um, although we were in the area, um, I don't feel that we were ever directly in harm's way. Other people have said, man, maybe you're probably a little bit more harm's way than you expected, but, um, but the experience and seeing the resilience of the people who were there and, uh, being a part of it is something that I will, uh, easily never forget. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. All right. So, uh, as usual, just want to touch on some of the bigger projects that we're working on. So our body worn cameras, our body worn cameras are fully operational. Uh, the officers are wearing them on patrol. Uh, and we are, uh, currently figuring out, not figuring out, but we are, um, along with the contract comes the retention of the, uh, videos. But once we have to, once we start a whole body camera video, like we pull all of our other video, uh, for discovery purposes, things that have to be turned over to defendants before we can proceed with a criminal case. Obviously videos are large. They take up a lot of, of memory. And so we're working on, uh, hopefully by the next meeting, we might have some information on maybe some funding that we're applying for that might relieve some of the stresses relating to, uh, that. Uh, obviously, uh, at this point now, we're expected to retain all of the video for all of our arrests, whether it's even prior body cameras, as soon as somebody walks in the building, they're going to be on camera pretty much for the entire time that they're with us. Um, and so we need to hold all that video as well. So the challenge of holding, um, and storing video is, is something that we're facing. Uh, but we're very excited about the opportunity for the transparency that the body worn cameras brings. Uh, next, accreditation. Again, as we spoke about at the last minute, it's an ongoing process. We are currently, um, still on schedule for our, um, our current slate of, of policies that we're working on. It is, um, it's challenged. It's a lot of time and effort. Uh, Sergeant Burwood, who was our accreditation manager, spent a great deal of time, uh, putting these things together, but this is something that he cannot do alone. This is something, you know, we're making decisions every day as far as making sure that our policies not only meet accreditation standard, which is what we actually do, you know, appropriate for. Um, so that's a group effort between, uh, there's five of us who run that committee, uh, and we meet regularly to make sure that the policies and procedures that we're generating, um, are reflective and appropriate and obviously importantly enough, meet the accreditation standards. Next. Our records management system, uh, as you may remember, uh, we're in a consortium with, consortium is not the right word. We're in a working group with Westchester County. They are providing, uh, a new records management system for us as ours is definitely an end of life. It's us and 13 other jurisdictions in Westchester County. They're all in that first cohort of, of, uh, departments that are going through a new records management system. Originally the contract called for us to be going live by March 2023. That was recently, recently, uh, amended to May of 2023. Uh, that was because the company, uh, had pushed out a product that was federal. The company had, had some, there was issues with the mobile reporting. So the officers in the cars, the link up that, it was enough of an issue that they said, we want to make sure we get it right. We don't want to push out a bad product. So it is a good thing. It's obviously not a good thing that there's a delay in the process, but we are comfortable that we'll, um, we're still working with, um, good products and like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll find out some more of the specifics as time goes on, but at a significant savings. Lieutenant Gil Martin has been our RMS liaison. He spends sometimes days, sometimes entire weeks down at the academy, working with those other jurisdictions because basically we are as the company is looking at us as, as one jurisdiction. It has to be uniform. It's all going to work together. It's a county IT project that we're all getting in on. Um, and so we have to make sure that we are speaking the same language as the RMS company, as well as speaking the same language as the same, as the other 13 jurisdictions who are on this project. So it is very time intensive, very labor intensive, but again, um, a significant savings, uh, to the village.
Is the data migration pace yet clear? How far back and, and what elements of it?
Nope. Uh, we have not gotten a final, uh, determination on that. What, what we're talking about is basically we have decades of records in our current records management system, as do with the other 13 jurisdictions. So what do we do with this? We know that our data is not pure. And we know that, and every other jurisdiction knows the same thing. So we don't really want to put bad data into a new system. That being said, obviously we don't only lose, uh, important knowledge, the important local knowledge that we've gained, um, over the last 25, 30 years. So we're trying to figure out whether it's a legacy system, whether it's some other path forward. Um, but these are not issues, although they haven't been settled here, these aren't issues that have prevented anybody from switching to an RMS in the past.
These days you go to the doctor and they say, oh, oh, then I gotta go to the old EMS. Oh, hold it. Too, too back. All right.
Uh, next.
The last one I see.
It's a dirty, I guess.
Not going any further.
Radio communication. Yeah. Uh, we are, um, moving forward with our radio communications. We expect to be, to start the, the financial process. We've obviously been working with, um, Mr. Morrissey and our treasurer, Norrie and Regan, to make sure that we're doing everything we can. A lot of purchases under very, very large state contracts, uh, a lot of good vendors. Um, some of the delay has been, uh, our continuing to, we, we are constantly continually assessing not only what our needs are, but what our opportunities are. Um, interoperability and communications across multiple jurisdictions is not only a concern for us, but it's also a concern for other people. And so we're continually trying to find different pathways where we're either sharing services or, uh, realizing savings, uh, as far as the, um, the purchase of this equipment to make sure that it is not only providing us communication here in the village, but where we can step outside of our own footprint as we do, uh, on a regular basis, as far as mutually is concerned, that we also have communication with, uh, the other entities we need to talk to. But we, we do, we do expect that the, the, um, the purchase to be within the next, I would hope to say the next three, definitely make the, definitely issue the POs before the end of the year. And then once we take delivery, um, bring that system up to operability.
And we are likely to use.
Right? That might be a record. Same. Might be.
Not bad, right?
Good job.
A quarter flies by.
I said I had till nine o'clock, but then.
Eight fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Military precision. Military.
We had someone before you.
That's right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, very much appreciated. Um, good stuff. So. All right. Um, uh, a couple of, uh, things I, I wanted to add to the announcements we made earlier. Uh, talked about Veterans Day, thanks to the American Legion and to the folks from the schools and to everybody who participated. Uh, I should have called out the Boy Scouts at the same time. Trip 12 provided a color guard and pledge allegiance as they always do. A big shout out to, uh, the scouts for their assistance. Um, several, uh, things to note on your calendar if you're interested. Uh, one of which is we have our lighting ceremony, uh, at, uh, the tree and the dreidel, uh, which is on Wednesday, November 29th, 7:00 PM, just as it's getting dark. So Wednesday 7th, uh, Wednesday 11:29 is the lighting ceremony. Um, we are having a work session with the, uh, village pedestrian committee. And that is on Monday, December 4th, uh, at 7:00 PM here, here in the meeting room, but we'll also.
uh, at seven PM here, here in the meeting room, but we'll also zoom that, I assume, Eric? So, uh, you can pick up that, uh, link via Zoom if you, uh, uh, prefer to watch, but, uh, we have, as you know, an active pedestrian committee and lots of things they're interested in, uh, talking about. And so we were doing that on Monday, December four. And then just one day later, on Tuesday, December five, uh, we have our annual joint meeting with Pleasantville, uh, school board. That will take place, uh, in the high school library at their normal meeting. We're going to visit them since they have a meeting to follow. Uh, so, um, mark those items on your calendar. Uh, also keep an eye at Pleasantville Music Festival dot com. Uh, uh, tickets are on sale for the twenty twenty-four July Pleasantville Music Festival, and we're going to have some opportunities uh, to buy tickets in person down at the rec center on Saturdays, on selected Saturdays in December. A great opportunity to pick up, uh, some, uh, tickets for folks for your holiday gift giving. Uh, and also to do that, uh, here in Pleasantville and, uh, avoid the, the, uh, online ticketing fees.
To add, uh, Peter, to tree lighting ceremony, although the event itself starts at seven, uh, we're going to be getting set up by around six thirty. We have, um, musical performer that we have banned, for this band that we had about two years ago, they're really good. Um, we also have our chocolate and the, we will have southern table and wooden fire providing food options.
For sale.
For sale.
Yes, great. All right, so that sounds great.
Yeah.
Every year it gets a little better.
Yeah, yeah, that and then, um, through the village and through the chamber, we're together combining our budget to get these special cookies made for all the kids, digestion desserts and everyone. So, um, we're working on that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Thank you, Paul, as always. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the rec center has been a site for Halloween costume drop off. If you're finished with your Halloween costumes, you can donate it now for next year. Halloween costume swap. Uh, Pleasantville Recycles has a collection bin at the rec department down on Marble Avenue. That is going on right now and it ends Friday this week, November seventeen. So if you are, uh, interested in donating, uh, a gently used costume that you don't need again, to the costume swap, get it down to the recreation department uh, during business hours anytime between now and the end of the day on Friday. And then, uh, the last thing I had on my list is that, uh, the Pleasantville Puzzle Hunt, folks. Uh, Cat Nemec, Greg Nemec, Andy Goodman, uh, are doing the fourth annual puzzle pu- puzzle hunt. That's going to take place Friday, November twenty-four, starting at ten AM through Sunday, November twenty-six at four thirty. Uh, it's part word puzzle, part visual puzzle, part scavenger hunt. Especially fun for families and groups to get out and walk the village downtown shopping area while solving puzzles. So, um, you can get the puzzle packet, uh, starting on Friday, November twenty-four, uh, by visiting the puzzle puzzle hunt on Facebook or by emailing PvillePuzzleHunt@gmail.com. So, uh, uh, a great Thanksgiving weekend venture and a big shout out to, uh, Cat, Greg and Andy Goodman for what is annually a fabulous thing and uh, I think this year is going to be, uh, more fabulous than ever, so. Anything else? Anybody else have?
No.
All right. Any comment of any sort from a member of the public? See if there's anyone to raise a hand. Uh, there being none. To the resolutions. Three sixty-four, Paul.
So I have to just second each other.
I guess it's going to be tag team.
No confusion.
All right, right. Um, result of the board trustees hereby minutes of the regular meeting held on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a third? Is there a fourth? Uh, comments or corrections of minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved three sixty-five, David.
Resolve the board trustees hereby accrue the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four is listed below. Five thousand dollars from contingency to charging stations electricity, eleven thousand seven forty-two dollars from contingency to village hall repairs and maintenance, uh, thirty-four thousand dollars from contingency to cleaning service for a total of fifty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
These are more sladdles than I anticipated.
Yep, um, the cleaning services, we had to drop our low bidder. We, uh, anticipated that budget for in contingency for this fiscal year. Uh, charging stations, uh, they're high demand, so we're, um, uh, obviously generating enough to cover that expense, but that's indicative of, uh, usage.
Yep.
Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, Paul, three sixty-six. It's struggling to open, Eric goes.
Okay, three sixty-six. Uh, resolve the board trustee hereby accrue the afteract of payment claim stated November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-four, covering check numbers one zero eight nine nine zero through one zero nine two zero three. General fund, two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and one and seven cents, special, three hundred sixty-seven and fifty cents. Water fund, a hundred sixty-two thousand, a hundred sixty-four and eighty-four cents, capital funds, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five and eleven cents. Reviews bond, fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen and forty-one cents for a total of four hundred sixty-one, four hundred ninety-six and ninety-three cents.
Is there a second? As is always the case, the detail on all of these things are attached in the agenda that you can pick up at Pleasantville-ny.gov links you to our novice agenda. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I approve three sixty-seven, David.
Resolve the board trustees hereby accept resignation of Brianna Rivers Recreation Assis- uh, Assistant Panther Club effective.
Uh, yeah, that, um, I will, uh, circle back on that.
All right, effective edit date to be inserted by the administrator. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Motion approved, three sixty-eight.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the hiring of Jalen Johnson, part-time available recreation assistant, job code two sixty-nine at hourly rate of twenty-two dollars per hour, effective November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Correction, uh, it's November twenty-third for Brianna.
Okay, so, uh, resolution three sixty-seven, the resignation of Brianna, effective November, what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Is that, uh, accepted by the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
Yes, uh, all right, motion approved as amended. Back to three
Sixty-nine.
Resolve the board trustees hereby accept the resignation of Joseph Sayetta, effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We appreciate Joe's service. Wish him good luck in his next mission. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, three seventy, Paul.
For this, should I go?
Thank you. Read all the detail you can say as further stated in the record, read the estimated salvage value.
Okay. Resolve the board trustees hereby approves the request from the Superintendent of Public Works, surplus of following vehicles and equipment. Please see the record, uh, for the estimated salvage revenue of eleven thousand nine hundred and one.
Is there a second?
Second.
List of vehicles and mowers and the like, uh, most, uh, well up in years that are no longer needed by the village and we will put them up for salvage. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I motion approved, three seventy-one, David.
Where is the village board of trustees, the village Pleasantville, Westchester, New York, New York, the village is considering undertaking improvements to the swimming pool at Anna Hagen Park, including replacement of liner pumps and electrical systems and original furniture. Equipment machinery or apparatus required in connection therewith the project and whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the SECP Act and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being six NYCRR, part six seventeen, has amended the regulations, the village desires to apply with the SECP Act and the regulations with respect to the project. And therefore be resolved by the board trustees, the village Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York as follows. Project constitutes a type-two action under six NYCRR seventeen dot five slash C, uh, C two and no further action under the SECP Act and the regulations it's required. And number two, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
This reflects the emergency work we had to do, resulting from flooding.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Aye, aye.
Paul, three seventy-two.
Goodness.
Oh, God.
All right, um, Resolution two twenty-three seventy-two.
Yeah, I don't think you have to read.
Sections?
Yeah.
Okay. Section one, the village is hereby authorized undertaking improvements to the swimming pool at Anna Hagen Park, including replacement of the liner, pumps, electrical systems and original furnishings, equipment, machinery and apparatus required in connection therewith at an estimated maximum cost of two hundred forty thousand dollars. And to issue, to exceed two hundred forty thousand dollars in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated costs of the aforementioned class of objects or purposes. Section two, the plan for financing of such maximum estimated cost shall be the issuance of not to exceed two hundred forty thousand dollars in serial bonds, the bonds of the village, which are hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to this resolution. Section three is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of after said a specific object or purpose is fifteen years pursuant to paragraph sixty-one of section eleven A of the local finance law. The maximum maturity of the bond shall be in excess of five years.
So you can have as further stated in the record, just call out, you know, section four or five around.
As far as stated in the record, uh, section five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second, uh, Mr. Mayor, rule call.
Uh, I.
I. David?
Aye.
I vote aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approves. Connor, you need Eric?
Uh, we do.
Okay, three, did we get a second? We had a second.
Yes.
Yes, okay, three seventy-three, David.
Resolve the board trustees hereby approves Ian Dale to the internal title Motor Equipment Operator Specialist. MEO spec CSE eight wage schedule A group MEO spec step six. At a salary of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, effective Monday, November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of a minimum of twelve weeks and can be extended to a maximum not to exceed fifty-two weeks. Spec memo attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a, uh, 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 an extended discussion in the memo, uh, about the reasons for doing this and the process they went through to, to examine that. Folks who were eligible for this position, Ian rose to the top in that, uh, and is proposed to be promoted. He is a uh, village employee since two thousand four, I think. Uh, nice, a, a, a good and loyal employee. Congratulations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Three seventy-four, Paul.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorize the village mayor or village administrators sign a lease agreement with the Pleasantville Community Television Incorporated, PCTV, to begin June two thousand twenty-four and expire May thirty-first, two thousand thirty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
This arose in part because PCTV is seeking some grant monies and, uh, that required an as in of their lease and what would just secure the facility. It has the capacity to be, to be, uh, 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 canceled by either party on reasonable notice. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, three seventy-five, David.
Resolve the board trustees hereby approves your request from Holy and Sons Parish, Pleasant Tompkins Avenue Parking Lot to Public Parking on Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three from four to ten PM for the purposes of a parish special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Reminding all that, uh, the, the lot at the corner of Tompkins and Mannville is actually owned by the church. Uh, that in exchange for our maintenance of it, it's available, uh, much of it is available for public use, uh, except at certain times of the day. Periodically, the church has an event as they do now and, uh, uh, we are obviously more than happy to uh, approve the closure of that they own. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Three seventy-six.
The, whereas the village of Pleasantville, uh, four oh one oh four hereby establish the following standard work dates for these titles. Will report the, the officials to the New York State and local retirement based on their record of activities. Villas Justice, seven, um, powers, John Mukel, two one three seven, um, seven thirty-seven, two five oh three eight. Current term begins April third, two thousand twenty-three and ends on April third, two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, record activity result, four point five two.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a revision
Correct.
To meet some standard.
Yep.
All in favor?
Okay.
I motion approved, three seventy-seven, David.
Resolve the board trustees hereby suspend parking meter fees for the time allowed on one, two and three hour meters from Thursday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three through Monday, December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
As is always the case, we, uh, are happy to do this, to encourage folks to participate in the activities and shop in downtown Pleasantville. Uh, time limits still apply. You can be ticketed if you exceed the time limit, so please be responsible. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, three seventy-eight.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorize the village administrators sign a proposal of Ralph G. Maestro Monaco, BEPC with the record with regards to the Pleasantville Village State Sidewalk and Gardrail Project in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred.
Is there a second? So this is the effort to design and engineer this sidewalk that will continue around at the edge of the village, uh, from the Pleasant Village Estates, uh, down to Pier Strive.
Yes, we need to secure, um, some paperwork from property owner that is moving in the right direction. That is ultimately the goal. We have seventy-five thousand dollars in esc- in escrow to help pay for the design and, um, capital. Capital costs.
Right. Is that, is that replacing an older sidewalk?
No, there's no sidewalk there.
I've never figured that out.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, three seventy-nine.
Resolve the board trustees hereby accrue the hiring of Kamala Williams, part-time available recreation assistant, job code zero two six nine at hourly rate of twenty-two dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I. Motion approved, welcome Jamel.
Three eighty.
Resolve the board trustees hereby approves the hiring of Sally Maurice, Recreation Assistant on an as-needed basis effective as of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on hourly rate of twenty dollars for the purposes of senior center activities.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, welcome Sally, three eighty-one.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorize this following ticket rates for the two thousand twenty-four Pleasantville Music Festival. Uh, December Ticket Fest from November twenty-fourth to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. General admission, fifty-five dollars, student senior admission, forty dollars, la- blind faith pre-sale January first, twenty twenty-four to April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, sixty dollars. General admission, forty-five dollars, student senior admission on sale April fifteenth to July fifth, twenty twenty-four, seventy dollar general admission, fifty-five dollar student senior admission, the week of the festival, uh, July sixth to July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, seventy-five dollar general admission, fifty-five dollars student senior admission and the day of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, fifty-five dollars general admission and sixty dollars student senior admission.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as I reported a little bit earlier, uh, Ticket Fest starts November twenty-four. You can buy tickets online, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com will link you to it. Uh, but there will also be some specific days when you can go to the rec center and buy tickets there. Uh, and just to be clear, uh, December Ticket Fest, uh, adult tickets, fifty-five dollars as compared to day of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, eighty-five dollars. You can save yourself thirty dollars a ticket by, by early. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, three eighty-two.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorizes the village administrators sign a contract with New York State Energy Research and developed authority in New York City for the purposes of receiving a ten thousand dollar grant for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford Lightning.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Lightning truck is on order, right?
It is. It is, it is.
All right.
How much is the cost now?
Sixty-five thousand.
Okay. They'll probably make that back in three years.
Three eighty-three.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to send bid contract twenty twenty-two dash two periodic electrical repair, installation and upgrade services with PRM Electrical, Inc., for one year effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a memo attached, uh, uh, about the, uh, extension of our, uh, arrangement with, uh, PRM. They've done a great job for us. Happy to continue it. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved. That is the last of our, uh, items. Is there any new business? Is there any member of the public, uh, who has, uh, comment of any kind? I see, uh, none. Uh, uh, with that, um, we have an executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, uh, we're headed into executive session. Uh, we will be back, uh, here, uh, two weeks from today on Monday. That's the last of the regular winter mark uh uh fall markets and then it is closed Thanksgiving weekend and begins again uh on Saturday, December two uh with the winter market uh somewhat smaller and somewhat more limited hours. So uh get all your Thanksgiving fixins at the Pleasantville Farm Market this weekend. Happy Thanksgiving to all, good night.